I'd like to call the Willow City Council Regular Meeting of July 22, 2025 to order. I am instead of our illustrious Mayor Evan Hudson, who was traveling. He thought he'd be back in time, but apparently something about time zones kept him away. So you have me to deal with. Shall we stand and salute the flag?
Wow, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Hudson, absent. Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Pride.
Here.
Councilmember Busby.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, item four, changes to the agenda. Marty?
There are no changes to the agenda.
No changes. So we'll move right into number five ceremonial matters. We have two proclamations today. I'll read the first one. City Willow's proclamation, National Disc Golf Day. Whereas Disc Golf is a dynamic, inclusive, and rapidly growing sport that combines athleticism, strategy, and the love for the outdoors. Whereas Disc Golf promotes physical activity, mental focus, and social connection for people of all ages and abilities. And whereas the sport is environmentally friendly, affordable, and provides a low-impact recreational option for families, youth, and individuals in our community. Whereas National Disc Golf Day, observed annually for the first Saturday of August, celebrates the history and growth of Disc Golf and encourages participation in this positive outdoor activity. And whereas local parks and recreation departments, Disc Golf Clubs, and community partners support the growth of the sport through course development, events, and educational programs. And whereas Dr. Billy Throm has been instrumental in promoting and supporting the development of the Disc Golf in the City of Willow's through his dedication, advocacy, and volunteer efforts. And whereas the City of Willow's recognizes the value of the Disc Golf in enhancing community well-being, promoting healthy lifestyles, and using public park spaces for inclusive recreation. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Richard Thomas, Acting Mayor on behalf of Evan Hudson, Mayor of the City of Willow's, and on behalf of the Willow City Council and the citizens of Willow's, do hereby proclaim August 2, 2025, as National Disc Golf Day in the City of Willow's, and encourage residents to explore and enjoy the sport of Disc Golf in our local parks and beyond. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and official seal this 22nd day of July, 2025. Mr. Dr. Throm, would you like to step forward? I will, before I do that, I'd like to comment that he was very instrumental in the creation of the Disc Golf Course as a member of the Willow's Rotary Club during his presidency, and built that Disc Golf Course with the assistance of Rotary. And then we stepped in just last year and poured some permanent concrete pads. Actually, we funded his effort to get that done, so I congratulate you on that.
I thank you guys.
Do you have a few words to say before I present?
Um, yeah, I'd just like to say thank you to everybody. Rotary, um, we did the course in 2009, of course you're well aware of, with Glenn Medical Foundation through a grant with them, you know, to do fundraising tournaments that put a course in there, kind of, everything kind of spiraled off of that. Willow's Rotary came next, Stony Gorge, the original course, followed after that. Benson-Haylor in Orland, there's a course at East Park Lake, and then there's two, one other course just opened at Stony Gorge, and there's another one in the works. And then hopefully we're getting Walker Creek and, you know, final approval. So, yeah, it's kind of popping up all over. And like you said, it's pretty inexpensive sport, outdoor sport, gets people outdoors and playing, keeps them active.
So he also shared with me that there's an app out there called UDisc. People driving up the freeway can look at the various courses that are here and wait pull-off just to try this, and they're rated and their comments. And apparently our course has a lot of positive comments, and so it draws people in off the freeway.
Yeah, it actually does. UDisc is pretty cool. It's a free app, has tracking on it, and like Rick said, wherever you travel in the world, you can look and it locates you and tells you if there's a mine hole, an AT&amp;T bull course, shops where to buy disc, if there's clubs going on, leagues, tournaments, all that information's listed on there. And it's actually pretty interesting reading reviews, reviews of the courses, but our, the Little Willow's course, like our courses around here, they do get pretty good reviews because people love stopping to stretch their legs for half an hour, doing an hour ride off I-5 while they're traveling. Yep, so actually, yeah, been in adventure for the last, like, that's about 20 years, hard to believe.
Thanks, Doc.
Thank you, guys.
And he's a good doc, too, by the way.
Our second proclamation is with honor. The City of Willow's proclamation for Purple Heart Day. Whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration still awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces, established by George, General George Washington on August 7, 1782. And whereas the Purple Heart is awarded in the name of the President of the United States to those who have been wounded or killed while serving in the US military. And whereas the thousands of brave service members have received the Purple Heart for their courage, sacrifice, and dedication to the defense of our nation. Whereas Purple Heart Day serves as a solemn reminder of the cost of freedom and the bravery of those who have suffered wounds in combat. And whereas the City of Willow's proudly honors and recognizes the contribution and sacrifices of our Purple Heart recipients and their families, and who have given so much for our country. And whereas the city supports all veterans and reaffirms its commitment to honor, respect, and remember their service and sacrifice. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Richard Thomas, acting on behalf of Evan Hudson, the Mayor of City of Willow's, and on behalf of the Willow City Council and the citizens of Willow's, do hereby proclaim August 7, 2025, as Purple Heart Day in the City of Willow's. And I encourage all residents to honor and remember the brave men and women who have earned Purple Heart and all who have served our nation with distinction. Witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and official seal this 22nd day of July, 2025. Carol, are you going to be receiving this? You know that? Absolutely, please do.
The post 1770, VFW post 1770, has, I believe, five to six Purple Heart recipients in that post. Unfortunately, none of them could come here tonight. A year or so ago, the City Council became a Purple Heart City. After that, the county became a Purple Heart County. We've been working on getting Purple Heart signs to put on Wood Street, 162, and 99. 99 has been cleared because that's just the county. And they said, no problem, you get the signs, we'll put them in. For getting them on 162, we have to go through the state. I'm working with James Gallagher, Assemblyman James Gallagher. They have to do a resolution, and we're working on getting that resolution passed through. And then we've worked with Caltrans to get the signs put in, just to let you know where we're at on getting those.
If you need support from the city, let us know.
You've already gave a letter.
Okay.
In support. That's what I said, it's been about a year, and so things move really like a turtle sometimes. Or it's now, so we're still working on it.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you for your service. Item 6A, Presentation from Spyglass Technology Expense Management Audits. Recommendation is to receive the Spyglass presentation and provide staff with direction. Marty Brown?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. The item that is before you, this presentation, is from Spyglass Technology Expense Management Audits. The presenter will be Noah Esposito. The presentation is just to learn a little bit more about expense audits, in particular utility bills. And Spyglass has a system and approach for helping cities and municipalities and other entities to take a look and scrutinize their bills and do an audit and see if there's some savings there that can be had. And I want to point out, that is at no cost to the city, which is why they're presenting. So with that, Noah, are you online?
Yes, can everybody hear and see me okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, so thank you, Marty and Carleen, for getting this set up. I appreciate everybody's time here today. So as was just said, we're a technology expense management firm. Just to kind of keep it high level, before I get into the few slides I have for you guys, we'll look at any voice, internet, data, mobile, cloud expenses that the city has. We're able to recover any past funds where you've been overbilled by providers, and then we can reduce current monthly spending going forward. I did just request to share my screen, just so I can get the slide approved. Here we go. All right, then if anybody could let me know if that pops up for them.
Popped up, yes.
Awesome, perfect. So just a little bit of history on Spyglass. We've been in business for 20 years now. As a result of our success, we've developed our own proprietary software. It actually houses the country's largest database of middle-market tech spend. So that's made up of historical bright pricing information across the services we audit. So we have a really good idea on the most competitive rates in your industry and area, and through our analysis, we'll be able to get you those rates. A few statistics around our success over the last few years. We have 14 going on 15,000 clients nationwide. In the last two years, we've completed nearly 3,000 audits and identified over $100 million in savings for our clients. As far as our findings go, 99% of our engagements were able to generate some sort of savings for the clients. In the rare 1% of cases, we don't find anything, we'd simply shake hands, you'd walk away, know you have a clean bill of health, not a penny out of pocket. 60% of our engagements were recouping costs. So finding dollars you've paid in error to your providers, we're going to get those dollars back to the city in the form of a refund or a credit. And then finally, 20% is the average monthly savings that we're able to provide our clients. To get into our analysis, there are three main buckets of opportunity to generate savings. The first one is recovery, which comes from billing mistakes. So this is money that you've already paid to your providers. So we find recovery dollars associated with contract compliance issues, improper taxes or tariffs, improper discounts, and incomplete order entry charges. So those are the dollars that we're able to recover, and like I just mentioned, get them back to you in the form of a refund or a credit. The next two buckets of savings are going to be forward-looking, so ways we can reduce your monthly spending, and this is where we average our 20% reduction. So service elimination recommendations come from our team conducting a very detailed usage analysis on every service type in order to identify services that are completely unused or underutilized that could be eliminated without disrupting anything in your day-to-day operations. The tough part about the unused or underutilized services is vendors won't go out of their way to make you aware of them, because for example, getting rid of a phone line that you don't need would be taking money directly out of their pocket. And then at the end of the engagement, we also provide the city with a very detailed inventory report. It's going to consist of every line, circuit, service, and license that you're paying for on a monthly basis. So you'll get that at the end of the engagement, whether you decide to move forward with the savings we bring back or not. The final bucket of savings here is going to be cost reduction. So this is usually our biggest area of savings. Our team will conduct our benchmark analysis utilizing our proprietary software I mentioned. So this is where that database of middle-market tech spend comes into play. We're going to leverage the best pricing of our other clients in your industry and area, get you the most competitive pricing for the services that you're using. And then as far as the process goes, the first step is to get you onboarded, which entails uploading two months of your most recent invoices. That is the lift that we ask for on the city. Along with that, we also have a LOA, a Letter of Agency, which is basically a permission slip that allows our audit team to work with your providers on your behalf. It allows us to access additional information on their side, like pulling customer service records, more historical billing and contract information. Saves the city time from having to get them, to get those documents to us themselves. And then in order to get the other invoices, what I would do is send over a very secure link, it's a drag-and-drop, so the materials can be uploaded directly through that. So once that's completed, we'll hold an on, or kickoff meeting. That's typically a pretty brief meeting as well. The point of that is to introduce you to the project management team. They would go over what you can expect as the analysis gets underway, so essentially just setting expectations for next steps. So once that's completed, we'll move into the analysis and findings phase. For that time, we would go our separate ways. For a project your size, it'd probably take somewhere around four weeks. So during that time, we're going to be doing the actual analysis and preparing the summary of findings. So once that four weeks is up, we would reconvene with you, present the summary of findings to you. So this is where the city would be in the driver's seat, because you can pick and choose which recommendations you want to move forward with, if any at all. Again, there's no obligation to move forward with anything if you choose not to. But to take that a step deeper, we're going to do the actual implementation work of what you want to move forward with. We don't, you know, put those on the city employees to put in place with the providers, so we'll do that work as well. Then at the end of the engagement, we'll provide you with the industry benchmark analysis. So this will show you how you fare compared to other organizations in your industry and area, so you can see how your rates and services stack up to those around you. And then because it has that benchmark rate laid out on it, if there ever is a point where the city's renegotiating with providers or changing services, they'll be able to use that as leverage to get better pricing within their next service or engagement with a provider. And then, again, the fees are 100% success-based. So we only earn on what you choose to have us implement on your behalf from the summary of findings. And then the savings have to actually be implemented and verified with the provider before we could earn our share. So again, to this point, there's no cost for the analysis itself, the inventory report, or the benchmarking. But there are two categories we look at regarding our fee structure. There is recovery and forward-looking. So first, for any recovery opportunities. This is going back to the inception of your contract, getting you any sort of refund. On those, we would simply share a 50/50 split. The second fee is focused on forward-looking savings. So instead of getting dollars back to your accounts, this is focused on reducing your monthly bill moving forward. So for these opportunities, we'll attach a multiplier to the amount we've saved you per month. That's going to guarantee that you're budget-neutral in year one. So in other words, what's already been allocated to overpay those providers is redirected to Spyglass for the first year. Again, keeping you budget-neutral, your ROI to a year less. Then in years two, three, four, and beyond, the city would be seeing 100% of the savings. And that is pretty much what I have for the presentation. Before I close out here, does anybody have any questions at all?
I suspect we do.
Okay.
Good. Oh, no, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, actually, it's very interesting. Zero cost, I think, work on a recovery basis.
Yep.
Okay, very good, period. There's no hidden, there's no hidden gimmicks in there anywhere, right?
No, no, there are not. Nope, it is as straightforward as it sounds.
Okay, well, it sounds pretty straightforward, so thank you for the presentation, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori?
How many accounts would we see? I'm imagining it would be our regular landlines, cellphones, internet. How many accounts? Kind of looking at city manager, just to see, you know, how big of a deal would that be for Willow's?
I don't know exactly how many accounts we have, but we have the Verizon cellphone, we have landlines, and we have internet, for sure. Can you think of anything else? AT&amp;T, Verizon, and Comcast. Yeah, so those three accounts, but multiple lines, of course. It's not just, you know, a single line or a single phone, so.
Thank you.
So you don't look at utility bills, like electric bills, gas bills?
No, so this would be strictly on non-technology expenses.
Technology expenses?
Yep.
Phone, internet.
Yep, phone, internet, data, mobile. I believe when Marty and I spoke, there was no cloud to be looked at, so it'd pretty much just be like phone, internet, data.
Does that include the technology service provider, the one that oversees the operation of the internet and the computer systems we manage?
Is that, Marty, do you know who the provider for that was?
Matt Semenice?
No, the answer's no.
Okay.
I already know the answer, no, that's not what they, no. It would be looking at these major utility, that major technology utility like Verizon, AT&amp;T, and Comcast, those accounts.
And do we know about what our monthly outflow is for these three accounts? I mean, probably not without asking ahead of time. That's a dangerous question, yeah, I wouldn't expect you to. I didn't know if maybe you'd looked at it ahead of time, if we're spending, you know, $10,000 a month for them, or $5,000 a month, what would the projected savings?
I think it's hard to know what the savings would be, because it's all based on what they find in the, you know, forensic process. So it varies from company to company, organization to organization. I certainly can get that information for you, though.
Well, last month, we paid $1,175.
I'm sorry?
We paid $1,175 to AT&amp;T last.
Yeah, it's expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, this is a presentation to get any feedback from the council, and if things like, you know, Councilmember Pride, if the council would like that additional information, I can get that to you after the fact, and then circle back with you individually and have a conversation about whether this is a service that we would like to avail ourselves of. That's of interest.
Pleasure to the council.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, no, I, sure, I'm interested. I mean, you know, our technology bills, you know, you add them up over the course of years, a lot of money, and where are we getting gouged? With AT&amp;T, really? I'm sure we're getting gouged somewhere, so, yeah, I'd be interested, especially, especially at zero cost, on just a recovery basis. This sounds very similar to our tax audit that, you know, that we contract for. So, no, I'm in favor of pursuing further, absolutely, so thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo that. Familiar with these services, have used them before and everything, and especially with really weird stuff, like a few years ago, a lot of these cellphone providers, they changed their, the way they contract for services, the way they specifically contract for devices and everything like that, and some, you know, there's some weird stuff where some folks are on legacy plans, some folks aren't, and this is the kind of thing that just like, hey, let's go through it, standardize it, I think makes a tremendous amount of sense.
And they don't tell you when those things change.
Yeah.
Personally, or special.
Yeah.
And any savings is savings. I mean, I'm not opposed to it at all, I was curious.
We can get that information, for sure.
Yeah, I would support it.
Sounds like you have a consensus.
Okay, that sounds great. There's no other questions for Noah. Noah, thank you very much for coming this evening and presenting, I appreciate it. I'll be in touch with you.
All right, thank you all for having me, have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you, Noah. Good presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number seven, Public Comment and Consent Calendar Forum. All items on a consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by a single vote, unless removed by a separate discussion by the council or city manager. Individuals wishing to speak on consent items or matters not on the agenda are asked to complete a speaker card and submit to the city clerk. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor and the council members and are limited to three minutes. By law, the council cannot discuss or take actions items not listed on the posted agenda. Do we have any public comment tonight? Hearing none. 7A is register approval. 7B is minutes approval of the July 8 and July 10 meetings. C is retired and new at library clerk, extra help, recommended action, adopt the attached job classification for a new retired and new at library clerk. Item 7D, property assessed clean energy pace program, recommend adopt resolution approving the statewide communities development authority and open pace program. 7E, 2024, 2025 sewer rehabilitation project. Recommended action, approve the resolution. Item 7F, geotechnical investigation of the Willow's wastewater treatment ponds. Members of the council.
Do you have no questions or concerns, Mr. Mayor?
I have some questions. Do you have any questions here?
No.
So.
I think if you, I mean, is the question's designed to have the, your colleagues reconsider the item, or is it just clarifying? Because if it's clarifying, I don't think you need to.
And the question is, if they're resolutions, do we need to roll call vote on these?
No.
Okay. So the 2024-25 sewer rehabilitation program, we have our staff recommendation. And I see John's not here.
No, but he and the Community Development Services Director have spoken, and I think Joe's prepared to, within reason, prepared to answer.
Thank you.
Questions.
Well, if John talked to you, because I ask him about this all the time. The base bid for the repairs is $1,164.80, and the contingency is 10%, or 116,000. And the construction management inspection, it says 60 working days for 150,000. That's $2,500 a day, $312.50 an hour, but then underneath it, there's an asterisk, says the overall time allocated to complete the project is 35 working days. At $2,500 a day, that's only 87,500. And I think John's statement in the past is that's the estimate, and he only bills what is actually spent. But that seems like a really high, it's 12%, 12.8% on the base amount, and 11.7% over the total amount with the contingency. So it just seemed high.
Yeah, $2,500 a day is the standard that you apply on the high end of a daily inspection rate. We could be, it could be a typo with the 35 working days, as it states that it's 60 working days. But also, we have another project going on with the sewer lift station rehabilitation. So basically, if Ray Leftwich from Coastland or another engineer is down, working on both those projects at the same time, we may be able to achieve some cost savings by them. They're going to be here for eight hours a day working on a project, but they may be able to split those hours between the two. So that could definitely be a reason for the lower estimate. I don't know why he would have 35 working days there, unless it was related to the potential estimated time sharing with the other lift station rehabilitation project.
Well, as long as we're paying for the time he actually spent, and not just the blanket 150, I'm okay.
Absolutely, it's only time spent, and that's not to exceed, and $2,500 is, like I said, the high end of it, and we like to include those, especially when we're dealing with bond funds and available, but we are, we do see every hour that's spent on those projects and how that's calculated at the end of it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Second question is the geotechnical investigation of the wastewater treatment ponds. I've learned more about sewer than I ever cared to know by reading this agenda.
That's why we put it on consent.
So the question is, based on the state's inspection, we don't know whether those sewer ponds are lined or not, so this consent item is to hire somebody to tell if they're lined or not.
Correct, yep, this would be to see if they're.
So speculation is they're not lined?
They could be lined with the natural benonite layer. I think it's benonite, I forget the actual chemical name, but, you know, not seeing a concrete liner, there is, there is a material that is very hard to see if it's installed or not, unlike a concrete liner or some other gunite liner. So this core sample would determine if we've got the presence of that.
So is the liner organic material, or is it like?
It is, you can have various different liners. The one that we would assume it was, because we can't physically see any type of liner, would be, I believe it's benonite or some, some material that's used that's acceptable or was acceptable previously.
What raises my concern about this is if they are not lined, and the state says we have to line them.
Yes.
The way I see how things cost, this is. The way I see how things cost, this is going to be a seven-figure fix.
It'll be, it won't be cheap. Um, you know, you can basically look at it as, uh, you know, installing concrete or gunite throughout the liner of a, a pond and then monitoring that for, for seepage. So.
This will, this will be part of the Prop 218 study, which you just authorized as part of the budget process. So, um, the city engineers already gotten started on, uh, preparing the RFP for circulation. And this project will certainly be part of that, uh, cost estimation.
Okay. Cause it's worrisome how we're going to pay for something that the state mandates. And I understand why they wouldn't want to mandate it. If there's nitrates leaching into the ground, it's going to go downstream. Just raises the very serious concern that we could have a real financial difficulty.
Yes, that landfills and sewer ponds and water quality are all usually very expensive, heavy regulated.
We don't have enough in the current operating budget to absorb the cost of, assuming that the pouring comes back and demonstrates that it's, uh, not lined or not lined sufficiently to meet state standards. The current sewage fund operating budget cannot absorb the cost to remedy the situation. So again, it's another good reason to jumpstart the Prop 218 study process.
But when I read their state's inspection, it sounds like we had very little wrong with the operation other than our, couldn't tell if the ponds were lined or not. So.
I believe that's correct. And, uh, they did water testing in, uh, underneath the ponds and the surrounding area. And this is how this issue came up is they did water testing and had some concerns about the concentration.
Nitrates.
Nitrates that were in the water that made them ask the question. And we haven't been able to definitively answer that question so far, but we're hoping that's going to change.
I'm not a farmer, so if this question's out of left field, could any of the nitrates be coming from the farming operations?
I think leaching into the, the water wells is always a, a potential.
It's a possibility.
Yep.
Absolutely. It's possible.
But this was direct, the wa, the water samples were directly underneath the ponds, which is something that they do anywhere in any city. Cause they're looking for that all the time.
Did, did we retain as when we upgraded the wastewater treatment facility, um, it was with the USDA loan. And so I would imagine that because it was done with the loan back in, when I was on the council before, which is at least 25 years ago, that they would have had to adhere to whatever standards were required at the time. Did John mention anything about if standards have changed in the last 25 years where now, you know, maybe what we did back then was fine, but now there's a new standard that if we didn't meet it, or is it a moot point if it's failing?
It would be a moot point, um, probably regardless. And I don't know if the ponds were included in that scope of work when the wastewater treatment plant was upgraded. Um, if it is a Benonite pond, it's it, and I'm going to use that word even though it might buy incorrect. Um, we may not have to, we may not have to move forward with lining if it's holding up sufficiently or it could, or it could come back and, you know, they might require us to still go with the concrete liner depending on the shape of it. If we get lucky and it is so happen lined with that material. But I, I can't answer that that was a part of that scope and would have fallen under the, fallen under the USDA's purview on, on regulating that it was brought up to a standard at that point. And he doesn't find any of the as built showing anything, um, regarding the ponds itself. So that kind of leads to the conclusion that it, on my end of it, that it wasn't included in that, that project.
He was, um, when we were asked this question, John was surprised. I mean, he has been the city engineer for over 15 years. I think it's around 17 or 18 years maybe now. Um, so he was fairly taken aback when that question was posed by the state. Uh, cause he was like, oh, I, I don't know. Cause this was before I got here, right? So yeah. So anyways, we'll, we'll find out soon enough.
Okay. Hey, those are my questions.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just briefly, uh, first call in reference, just to comment in reference to item 70, the sewer rehabilitation project. It's great to finally see this coming forward because we're on a very strict timeline to spend those, uh, bond funds. So, yeah, I've been, uh, I've been a little worried about this. So, so thank God it's coming forward and, and, uh, in reference to your questions, Rick, all, all great questions, obviously, but, uh, you know, John Wanger is, Coastland's very, very fair in his, on his billing to us. We're lucky to have him. So.
Oh, I'm not questioning John.
Oh, no, no, I know. I know.
You watch over the city dollars. So.
Yeah, absolutely.
I asked the question.
No, no, it's a good question, but, uh.
Just to add to that, on, on grant, other grant applications, we, we normally see those kinds of percentages put in at a budgetary level. And normally we're, we're coming in under that, but I understand it as a big number to have out there for inspection schedules. So.
Yeah, it's just, I'm just, yeah, really to see this project finally coming and utilize those funds to upgrade our, or, you know, our sewage mains, which are in extremely, as we know, extreme, they're old and they're in extremely poor condition, uh, citywide.
Yeah, they're, I don't know if you've seen already, they're working on the Lassen Street, um, right now. All the bond money will be expended by December 31st of this year. So.
Yeah, it looks like we're on track. Very good, Marty. Thank you. And in reference to item seven F, the geotechnical investigation of the wastewater treatment ponds. Uh, yeah, Rick, I agree. Uh, the, uh, was pleased to see that the report indicated that, that our contract firm is doing a, a very good job at, uh, properly operating our wastewater treatment plant with the exception of some weeds and some debris in the, uh, basically the secondary overflow or whatever you want to call it, whatever it was referred to as. Yeah, it was, you know, it was good, it was good to see. But the frightening thing is that the regional water quality control board yields a lot of power as we know. So yes, we are at their mercy. So, but, but I was, I was pleased with the, with the positive inspection report in the end. So, so. And nitrates? Yep. They occur. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I don't know, in reference to the lining, uh, God knows it would be, I, I'm sur, you know, they're probably not lined. I mean, we don't know, but it's a very good possibility. So brace for impact. So unfortunately, so that's all I had. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Does the council wish to make a motion?
Motion.
Oh, go ahead.
Motion to approve the consent calendar form.
Second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion passed unanimous. Welcome aboard.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for being here. Drive safe going back. Bye.
Okay. Public hearing, all matters of this section of the agenda are formal public hearings and will be acted upon individually. Individuals wishing to speak on these items are asked to complete speaker cards with city clerk. Comments should be directed to mayor and city council members and are limited to three minutes. If you have any documentation that you would like distributed to the council, please give it to the city clerk for distribution. Item eight A, public hearing weed abatement special district. This is Chief Monk, but he is not here.
That is correct. Um, Fire Chief Monk is on strike team at the Orleans Fire up north. So, um, I will be stepping in. I'll do my best to, um, act like I'm a fire chief for a minute without putting out a fire, of course. Uh, so the item that is before the council is the, to conduct a public hearing. And upon conclusion, consider adoption of the resolution attachment one confirming costs of abatement and declaring them a special assessment of as of August 4th, 2025. As you may recall, weed abatement is a multi-council meeting agenda item. And this is the last one for the 2025 season. And this is the opportunity for members of the public to protest, um, any of the billing that they've received now that the abatement process is over and has been invoiced before you are to, um, appeals. Neither of those individuals were able to be here tonight in person. But they did, and I believe it's on the dais for all of the council. They did submit appeals, uh, 450, um, North Plumas Street. Um, resident and also, um, this one doesn't have, oh, 142 South Lassen Alleyway, uh, another, uh, resident, uh, residential property. Um, I don't know if you want me to read the emails or, uh, if you've already had a chance to familiarize yourself with the protests, um.
Yeah, yeah, uh, Marty, I just, I was familiar with the first email, but just saw the second email, just, just now in reference to.
Did we actually mow down their flowers?
I'm sorry?
Did we actually mow down the weeds or the flowers? So is this, Carlene gave me the notes, said, in this particular instance, Nate took pictures of 132 South Lassen, not 142 South. Well, we have pictures here.
Looks like the picture is, uh, well, it was incorrect, right? In the PowerPoint? Okay. Did you want to see it?
Cause, cause I know on the vicaries, on the original abatements, there was 142 South Lassen and 162 South Lassen. They're both owned by the vicaries. They were both noticed. Now only 142 South Lassen got a non, you know, the notice that it was not abated. And it looks like the picture is the parcel closest to the street, which I think is 162 South Lassen. That's the garage. Um, but yeah, if, I mean, if they got an abatement, a bill, but they weren't mowed down and it was just a mistake.
If I may.
That's what I'm kind of confused. I mean, if they got a bill, then someone went and mowed something down. I'm just trying to find it. Okay. So these are the pictures of the parcel that is marked 002112002. That is supposedly 142 South Lassen Street, but Tara did some reconnaissance today and, um, discovered that it's actually 132 South Lassen Street. Right. So this is the property that was abated.
So I'm sorry, so 132 South Lassen was abated?
Correct.
Either one of these properties. Okay.
And, and I'm, if I'm gathering this correctly, 132 was abated, but we billed 142 on accident.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
So we need to send a bill to 132 because they're not on this list.
If we gave them notice.
Yeah. And, and I don't have an answer for, for you about whether they were noticed or not. I'm assuming they were, but I also, they weren't billed. And, um, so they're, they're missing this process. Like if we had billed them, they're missing the process right now where they get to protest. So I'm not sure that we can do that. I don't think.
Right. They, they didn't have the opportunity to.
Right.
Take care of it the right way. So like.
Right. And they weren't, they weren't on the original notices either. That address wasn't.
So, um, and then the other one, I think it was, oh, a box that was not, uh, correctly, the, the abatement process was really meant to be in the alley, but it only, the box was checked originally for, I think the front yard. Um, is that what it?
Uh, the way I read that, I might have missed some, but the way I read that is the, uh, the homeowner did not understand that the alleyway counted.
Yeah, I wasn't, it was unclear to me whether the front yard had to be abated or not.
Right.
It was very.
I would just recommend to the council that you go ahead and, um, accept these protests and waive them. I mean, there is clearly confusion even amongst ourselves. So that's, doesn't bode well for the resident. So.
I would agree.
I agree.
Well.
They're not, uh.
Yeah, we, yeah, well, Marty, uh, you know, I, I know the vicaries is several of us probably do. And, uh, they, uh, I mean, took meticulous care of their property as we know. So, and, and these flowers look great. And, you know, and obviously they're not weeds. So, uh, but yeah, that's, that's a no brainer in reference to the vicaries. And I was, it was very unclear to me on, on, uh, what exactly occurred. Reading the documents that were shared with us at the other, uh, 450 North Plumas. I, I have no idea what, what happened there. So I, I agree with your recommendation.
The 450, um, was.
That was the front alley. Who knows? Yeah.
Yeah, I know that the, um, that was on July 7th. Yeah, that's the one I'm referring to that. I know from talking with the fire chief and I think Councilmember Pride had a conversation as well that, you know, his perspective is it's your whole property, even if I only, you know, even if we only check the box that says your front yard. And I think it's fair to say that it, it's hard to make the case that if you did your front yard, but you didn't think to do the narrow strip of your alley between the alley and the, you know, fence, and you overlooked that, and you also weren't told to look at it and you're a new resident in this town. Just seems like it's fair to waive it.
Yeah. Uh, to be fair, I didn't know I needed to cut the alley until the warrants told me, oh, oh, hey, you really got to take care of that. So.
There you go.
We just moved here. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think we just need to improve upon, uh, this is, this has been a valuable lesson learned here and maybe improve upon how we communicate with the abatement process.
I think I got the cart before the horse. So I'm going to open the public hearing at this point in time. Correct. So we're opening the public hearing at 6:46. Comments about items eight E, public hearing, we debate with special assessment. Anybody have a comment that they wish to make? Hearing done. I will close the public hearing at 6:48.
I did not have any further comments. My recommendation remains the same, that you should waive, um, and, um, uphold their protests and waive the costs for both properties.
So I'll look to the, my fellow council members for a resident, for a motion or a recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, move, uh, move the resolution title or resolution, the city council, the city willows confirming costs of abatements amended and declaring them a special assessment be adopted with the amendments in reference to the three parcels that we've been, uh, we discussed prior to the opening of the public hearing. Well, there's, vicaries had two and.
But no, but there's only one.
It was only one on the.
Only one issue, 415.
In reference to the two parcels, whatever parcels we discussed, the, the two owners. Uh, anyway, this might, this is the most.
Seconded.
Motion in a second. No further discussion. All those, oh, it's a roll call.
Roll call.
Councilmember Busky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pride?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Motion passes, four to zero.
Okay. Moving right into item number nine, discussion and action calendar. All matters on the discussion and action calendar will be discussed and acted on individually. Individuals wishing to speak on these items are asked to complete a speaker card and submit it to the city clerk. Comments should be made to the council. Unlimited three minutes. Item nine A, Willow's Museum Memorandum of Understanding, recommend action approve the attached memorandum of understanding, City Willow's. Marty Brown.
Um, good evening. Thank you. Uh, so the item before you is to just revise the Willow's Museum Memorandum of, of Understanding. It's really just to modernize the agreement, but the big change is to bring back, um, control and responsibility by the city for the actual structure and the building itself, which, um, previously has been the responsibility of this, um, society, museum, the society, the museum or museum society, um, who currently leases the building from us for the museum. Um, that was the major change. We also added, um, including an annual presentation of the council on their activities. Cause it's basically leasing for like a dollar a year and then, uh, notifying the city if, um, there's going to be an extended closure, um, after, that's 30 days or more that we get notified by, um, the board of the society. That's the major changes. And I, I just want to say that I, the reason I initiated it because I was concerned about having sort of a nonprofit that doesn't have a lot of money being responsible for a city asset and its actual structure, you know, repairs, the roof. Oh, I mean, that, all those things can be very costly on a building that was built in 1910. Um, it is a city asset and I don't think any of us would rent our houses until the renter, by the way, the roof is your responsibility and so is the foundation. And so it just made good sense to me to bring back that responsibility into the city. And, um, yeah, that, I mean, that concludes my presentation, but I'm sure that Councilmember Hanson has something to say because he sits on that board.
Yeah, Marty, uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I meant to, you, you jumped right in. So I meant, I meant to make my, my, that's okay. That's okay. Uh, you, you, you do good work for us. So just to be clear, I, I, uh, I sit on the, uh, museum society board directors and the vice president. I've been on the board for 12 years. I've been the vice president for six. I do not have a conflict of interest as I have, I derive absolutely zero income from this. It only costs me money. So, uh, we have, we have, we have a, 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 a small, a, a small but active board. The, uh, is, is indicating the staff report. Thank you for the staff report, Marty. Good job. So Marty attended along with Rick and, uh, former council member Dave Button, uh, Rick, uh, Rotary, through Rotary Club. I think you were president then, Rick, still or?
I'm president now.
Oh, you're a retread. You're coming in again. There you go. So, so, anyway, had a Rotary Club meeting at, at, or museum. So it was great, absolutely, and, 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 you know, get, get a little tour of the museum. So Marty Brown, our city manager, is a Rotary Club member, asked the question, why? Why does the city take this building back? Well, it's a great idea, you know, the, the museum was basically dumped on the Museum Society, or that building, I should say, the, the former library, years ago by the city of Willow's. And, you know, and we, we do have some, some funding that, that we've, we've struggled to, you know, to do donations to put together and invest. But it's, you know, it's, it's a small but mighty, mighty group that keeps that, that operating, and it's an old building, it's a Carnegie building, and it's actually in fairly decent, according to our, our, our building inspector Wyatt Paxton, and I have a lot of faith in him. It's in good condition for its age, but it's, it's an old building, and it has issues, and, and, you know, we, the city has maintained the grounds. Public Works, they're doing, they do an awesome job maintaining the grounds, and the Museum Society has been responsible for maintenance of the building. So Marty's recommendation, I thought it was fantastic, was to, to be, it is a city asset, city treasure, to have the city maintain the building, and the library board fully endorses that. So basically, the MOU was amended. And thank you, Andrew, our city, our city attorney for your work, and Marty, for your work on this. This amendment, some, some very basic amendments were made, in reference to just turning the building back over to the city responsibility for the maintenance of the building, and museum operations will basically continue as, as they have, have been. And I'll be providing an annual report, as long as I'm on the board, once a year on our museum activities to the city council. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Now, I just want to make it, make it clear that I, I don't have any financial conflict with this matter. That's why I'm still sitting there. So, thank you, thank you, Marty and Andrew, for your work on this, and thank you, Marty, for, for the recommendation.
Councilmember Busby?
I'm sorry. So, sounds like we're taking on a pretty significant financial liability without any revenue upside, in a time where our budget's a little tight. Do we have any pending large maintenance projects that are a necessity to keep that building in operation, that we know of?
There is one, but.
Yes, there is.
That will be revisited by the council, because we're also going to have to go through the same thing, which is an exclusion process with bats. Now, the, the current museum has actually, the museum board has already entered into a contract that will be executed in the second half of August, I believe, and there has been some preliminary discussion about whether or not the city would be willing to, at, at a minimum, like, share the cost, maybe 50/50. So my response is, the council can entertain anything that they want to entertain, but I'm not going to speak for them. I think that's a possibility, but it really is ultimately up to the council, and so that'll be something that'll probably be coming back to for consideration. We need to do that here. We do have an issue here at, in the Civic Center, and we've been waiting for the partial library collapse, which I don't know if you know, it started this week, that it's actually being repaired finally after almost seven months. And so that should be done in another two to two and a half weeks. And once, because there's no point in looking at, you know, exclusionary of bats, that whole process, when we have an open ceiling. So we've been waiting to finish that process, and then we're going to need to get some sort of estimate for this building. And so my plan was to come back and see if there was an interest on the part of the council to share the cost with the museum at the same time that we're doing this building, because we do have an issue here, for sure.
We have bats in the Belfry.
I'm sorry?
We have bats in the Belfry.
I could, if, man, I don't want to interrupt you, but this in no way has any bearing in any, in any building cost, where the, the, the timing of this. This is just Captain's Dance on this timing. So anyway.
Yes, it is, totally.
This had nothing to do with that, the Museum Society is, is, at this time, I mean, this, we'll have further discussion on, on, on the building maintenance issues, but it is a city-owned building, and always has been, and always will be. It's not owned by the Museum Society.
Right.
So anyway, so go ahead.
So I guess my, and maybe I'm genuinely fundamentally misunderstanding what the MOU is, is doing, but essentially what I'm concerned about is, we, the society has had some sort of mechanism to pay for maintenance and operation of that in their, in their, you know, being in that building, and I'm assuming that that is through donations. Are they getting any kind of like door fee or anything like that to go walk through the museum, whatever? There's a mechanism there to pay for, hey, the door broke, we have to go get a new latch. We don't have that mechanism, so we are essentially taking on, I know it's our building, but there's always some like, I, I don't know what the agreement has been in, you know, leasing it for a dollar. Hey, usually those lease for a dollar things are, if something breaks, you got to take care of it, kind of thing. Has that been the, the, the agreement? And then if we are changing that agreement, we're taking on the liability for a roof, or a, you know, a window, or anything like that. Is there any kind of, you know, I'm, I'm just concerned with how tight our budget is moving forward. Like, could we be eating up revenues for other things by, you know, taking this on by not having a mechanism to recoup those funds?
Well, I think, I know that Councilmember Hanson has something to say, but I just want to quickly jump in and say that the board, well, it's really not very much money that they collect and raise, and first of all, and I'm sure Councilmember Hanson can speak to that more, but a lot of what they do is they do the work themselves. And so I think, you know, so my concern is they're, I mean, it's very generous. I don't misunderstand me, Gary. It's very generous that they do that, but I don't know that that's the way we want to.
No, that's important.
Or, yeah, so, I don't know. Councilmember Hanson, do you want to speak to the fundraising efforts of the museum?
Thank you, Marty, thank you, man. All excellent questions, obviously, because, you know, you don't have any idea how the museum operates. I understand that. I didn't either till I, till I went on the board. Yes, we do almost all the work ourselves, and Public Works does assist us from time to time. As, Public Works is available, responsible for the, for the, for the grounds, anyway. And we've also done work on the grounds, too. Matter of fact, last Tuesday, we were there all morning on a, on a major work project in, in the basement. And yes, we do the bulk of the maintenance, and, and there, very little, last, last year, we painted the interior of the building, or a good, a good section of the interior of the building, and, and made some, some other minor repairs. Generally, with the, the skill base that, that a couple of us have, we can, you know, we can do most of the work ourselves. And the, in, in the MOU, the day-to-day operation of the museum will be our responsibility. That won't change, that won't change. I mean, Public Works was very helpful last year with some, some water intrusion issues that we had in the basement due to a, due to an old, there were three water lines basically running in the building, and there was an old line that was leaking through the, through the basement. So Curtis Herbert and I, along with Diane Balk and Marlene Stillwell, did, did the bulk of the work, the, all, all of the tear-out work, and then Public Works, Josh and Mike, who were very helpful in putting some, some shelving in place. We purchased the materials. So really, the cost outlay, until very recently, has been minimal, because we've been, you know, handling it ourselves, and that won't change. That won't change. Like I say, the building in White City is in pretty good shape. It just, it, it has cracks, because it's an old building, we're on clay soil. It's, it's, it has cracks. It served as the library until 1969, when this wonderful building was built, and the library opened here in 1969. It's been a museum since the early 70s, somewhere around 1972, roughly, 72, maybe 73. But yeah, that's, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. The current MOU, really, the, the main change is, is that, you know, the, the city will take over, you know, responsibility for the maintenance of the actual building, which, which I think is fair. It is a city-owned building. Like I say, but nothing's really going to change as far as, as our internal maintenance. To date, the, the paint job, since I've been on the board, was the most, the largest expense we ever had, so, you know. But yeah, and we don't, we don't charge. We do accept donations. And matter of fact, we have about $80,000 roughly, total operating capital accounting, checking and savings, and, and that was all from donations. You know, basically, and we, we, we do invest that.
Over a fairly long period of time.
Absolutely. And, and one of those donations was extremely large, so, but.
So the, the only reason I was concerned is if there's a major heavy lift, and it's not something that the board can just go have a workday and fix, like dry rot, or the roof, or.
Micropiling the foundations.
Yeah, right. So I just, I, to me, it's a Carnegie building, it's a cute historic building, and like I said, it's an asset. So to me, it just made sense that we should take on that responsibility, but if the council wants us to come back with a different recommendation, maybe if it's over a certain dollar amount or something that needs to be done, I mean, we could certainly revisit that, or just, if you want to leave it the way it was, I don't think that is a great, the way it was before. It was a great system, but.
We've, we've also replaced windows, you know, we replaced several windows in the building, I forget about that. But I think the, the museum operating budget formerly, a few years ago, was $2,500 a year, the line item, and it's been reduced, I think, to $1,500 a year the last number of years.
The general fund?
Our, our museum, museum maintenance line item, I think is $1,500, right? I'm sorry? Yeah, it might even be less. Might, might be less now, but I, I should have looked for the meeting, but it's minimal that the, the city spent on the building, so.
Yeah, I, I think I understand and agree with the solution. I, I just want to make sure that we're clear on what we're saying yes to. My last point on this would just be, because it is such a specialized building, being Carnegie building and everything like that, post-COVID, I would have some sort of insurance assessment done, like, we're finding a lot of like those kind of specialty buildings and everything like that. What, what we're insured for doesn't even cover half of what it would cost to actually fix or replace the asset, so.
Well, I think that you all know that we just did a major appraisal, and that's exactly right. We need to pay about double, which is why our insurance went up this year, because we're doing exactly that, because it was a huge problem. I'm so glad that our insurance came to me and said, you know, it looks like you haven't had your, had an appraisal of all your assets in a very long time. So we did that.
And was that part of it?
That, yes, oh, yeah, every single asset, including sewage pumps, like, everything was looked at. The only thing that was not were actually the two residential houses and the residential lot, because that's under a separate insurance. But all these other assets that we have are vacant land down near the wastewater treatment plant, sewage pumps, yes. And it went up a lot, because it had not been appraised in a long, no one could remember how long, in fact.
Knock on wood, we didn't have a problem.
Yeah, right. I mean, it is good, but it's like, I, I would rather that we get, be insured up to what we need to be insured for our stuff.
That's all I got.
Nope, I'm good.
Pleasure to counsel.
I've been quiet. I would move that we approve the attached memorandum of understanding between the city of Willow's and the Museum Society of Willow's as presented.
Seconded.
Further discussion? Comments from the audience? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Question carries.
Mr. Mayor, for me, yeah, thank you to my colleagues. I vote. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, item number 10, comments and reports, council correspondence. I think each of us may have received.
It was the letter from Santa Rosa First Church of God. You should have it on the dais.
And we have a letter from the Santa Rosa First Church of God. It appears that she is in opposition of the cannabis retail dispensaries.
And we, and we didn't, I know that you all, you showed some postcards, I got one, too. We didn't.
Yeah, I was going to.
Track that as, yeah, necessarily, it's just, it's an invitation, so. The other one is, of course, more concerning.
So this one will be presented to the planning commission, is that correct?
Yeah. So we can introduce all things submitted to the city clerk in regards to all those records.
It'll be in the agenda package for the, for the planning commission?
Yeah. See before a certain time, the agenda will include it in the packet itself. If it comes after that time, we would include it up.
So I will, within my prerogative, waive the reading of this, because it'll be included in the agenda for the planning commission.
Well, I mean, certainly, if the council wishes, you can just tell us you want it in the agenda packet, and we'll do it. That easy.
Did we have a choice? I didn't know we had a choice.
Well, typically, we would prefer that it's submitted to the city clerk, like Joe just said, but, I mean, you're suggesting your comments that you'd like it, and you want to make sure it's included, so we'll, we can do that. Is that something you want included in the?
I think.
Planning packet, yeah, okay.
Community's engaging, we should engage.
There you go.
Other item of correspondence is an invitation to the Johns Manville, celebrating 50 years of excellence on Monday, the 29th day of September, from 10 till 2. And they will welcome us, opening the time capsule from 50 years ago, I suppose. Presentation of a gift of some sort to somebody, and lunch, and then unscheduled plant tours and memorabilia displays and social engagement, live music, food, and vendors, and much more. So, it's interesting. Not too much, too many of the folks here know that much about John Manville and some of our other manufacturing and other businesses, because you don't get to see them. So that'd be a great opportunity for, for the public to go understand what's going on out there.
Yeah, for sure, there are installations all over the country, so, and in my house.
City Council comments and reports. Lori?
All I have is I attended the LAFCO meeting last Monday, the 14th, just looking up policies and procedures. There were no actual projects on that agenda, so it was a 15-minute meeting. I got to chair it, because you weren't there, and Grant wasn't there, and.
Why is it when I'm not there, it always goes quick?
I know. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Hanson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, oh, boy, I have a report. I'll make it, I'll make as, as painless as I can. So Lori, Pride, my, my colleague Lori, thank you very much for the reminder. I, I messed up our last report out in reference to, I thank the chamber for the great fireworks show. Well, the chamber doesn't do the fireworks show anymore. I'm sorry, I forgot that. And Tony Wagaman is the president of the Willow's, I think Willow's Fireworks Committee, I think is what it's called, the also.
Car and Bike Association, I think.
Elsa chairs the Car and Bike Association. So it's the Car and Bike Association, actually putting on, okay.
Yeah.
But I know Tony, Tony chairs at the, and his committee, and, and just, I wanted to thank the, the proper team for the fireworks show. Great job. So great job, Tony and team. So thank you, Lori, for, for, you know, letting me know that I was an idiot in public again. That means, gee, that's never happened before, but anyway, thank you. Next up, we had a monthly Going Groundwater Authority Board of Directors meeting on July 14th, routine business. We focus on the, the groundwater sustainability plan implementation, demand management, and, and domestic well mitigation. Those are the bulk of our efforts right now, moving forward. It was, it was a productive, productive, solid meeting, as they always are. A lot of work, but we're, but we're getting there. We're, we're task by task, we are knocking them out, so, which is good news. Secondly, we had the Glen County Transportation Commission meeting on July 17th. Regional Transit Committee, there was no meeting, there was a lack of a quorum, so, but we did have a Transportation Commission meeting. Routine business, the major item, it is a major expense item. It's in reference to SB 125, the transit and intercity rail program and zero emission transit capital program allocation request. This is two-year funding for a total of three, little over $3.9 million, and basically, once again, it needs to be routed into the transit, intercity rail, and zero emission. So with some of the funding, we're going to be purchasing a second, small electric vehicle for the urban, for the urban route. We recently purchased one, I believe it's $200,000, it's a Ford product. This will most likely be a mirror of that when we do that. We have one that we purchased, we have not received it yet, for Willow's, for the, for the local Willow's route. Seven passenger, and can also handle one, one wheelchair passenger as well. And the bus that we purchased will be put into service soon, and, you know, with the, with the limited range, it'll, it'll be in service here in Willow's. The second bus will be purchasing later with some of this funding will be in service in Orland. And also installation of charging systems in both the Orland and Willow's areas, yeah, that are respective. Yeah, better respective county corporate yards where the buses are, where the buses are housed here in Willows and also a charging station in Orland for that, for that Orland, Orland bus. But and the bulk of the money will actually be for, we're able to use it for actual transit operations, which is good, current transit operation. So it'll be money. It'll be well utilized. We wanted to make sure that it was well utilized. But thanks to SB 125 for that funding. That was the bulk of that meeting. The bad news out of that meeting was our Caltrans liaison. Dawson Stroud does a, does a great job for us and I'm not going to shoot the messenger because this isn't Dawson's problem. But once again, Caltrans has stung us here in the city of Willows. I shared this information with our city manager and our community's development services director and others. So Marty and Joe, you have this information. Thank you for responding. The scheduled Stair Route 162 total reconstruction project from basically the railroad tracks to the city limits on the west side and in the airport road has been stalled. So not very happy about that. It's been moved back to fiscal year '27, '28 due to delays with the railroad company. So this also impacted a capital maintenance project for Stair Route 32 in Orland. However, that project is going to pursue because they're just going to most likely be dropping the railroad portions of that project. I don't know why we don't do that here because in Willows, the reconstruction project, the last reconstruction project from 162, basically the railroad tracks to Glen, just Stair Route 45 was already done. So, and anyway, I'm not done making noise on this. So we're going to be making noise on this. This is, you know, once again, our, you know, our local taxpayers are being penalized for some reason. But you see these construction projects all over the state in the urban areas. But we need this badly. In the intersection of Wood Street and, well, Stair Route 162, Wood Street and Tama Street is, is already has craters in it. There's no way it's going to last another two years for God's sakes. So it's just, it's, yeah, 162 is in terrible shape. But this is very, very disturbing news because this project was supposed, the reconstruction project for the remainder of 162 was supposed to be done in 2026 and it needs to be done in 2026. But anyway, this, you know, this came, this, this came up a late Thursday. Marty Thomas, our executive director, unfortunately had to relay the bad news. And Dawson, our liaison, did not provide it. He gave us a heads up, but it came from engineering. There's also an issue with FAA at the airport, some type of an encroachment issue with delays. And Marty Thomas has, has, has shared that it's been his experience that railroad and FAA are horrible with dragging their feet and getting these encroachment permits done. So we're going to see what we can do and our city engineer may have a temporary solution to us. Stay tuned for more information on that. But I just wanted to share that unfortunate news. It's, it's not good, not good news at all. So, but, but we're used to it for some reason with Caltrans. It's just, it's just not acceptable. And moving on to that, we had a special joint meeting of the Glen Groundwater Authority, inclusive Groundwater Authority Board of Directors last Friday on July 18th. We alternate locations. We meet once a month. We have been all year. We have 12 meetings scheduled this year. We have five more to go. This particular meeting was in Colusa, which is good because I made a Jeff's run on the way home. Jeff's Freeze Ed. If you haven't been there, fantastic. Oh, got to check it out. Fantastic. Great Frosty. Sure glad it's not in Willows. I mean, I wish it was, but I'd be there every day. But anyway, working on the domestic well mitigation program development and, and the groundwater demand management program development, that's what those meetings are all about. We had a good, a good positive, productive meeting. The Colusa Groundwater Authority did have a quorum and we were able to get quite a bit of business done. So moving forward on our, on our groundwater sustainability plan implementation. And with that, I think I covered everything I wanted to cover. I don't think I missed anything, but that's all I had. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Busby?
Nothing for me.
Okay, on July 15th, Matt and I held sway over a finance and measure I oversight committee meeting here in the East Line Halls. Lori was in attendance. We went through the financial policies. There's actually, we went through, where's my note? I had it. Finance, the administrative procedures policy manual, general fund reserve policy, investment policy, debt management policy and the pension fund policy. And we focused on the top three, finance, general fund reserve and the investment. Matt and I were both sufficiently confused trying to read the debt management policy and the pension fund. So we will have to try to digest that sooner or later. The administrative policy that we have currently sets two designated reserves, one being for catastrophic reserve, the other being for budget stabilization. We spoke about that. We felt that the size of our budgets, we're going to make a recommendation to the council that'll come here in a while. I'm not sure when it'll come to the full council. To eliminate the catastrophic budget stabilization reserve, it just has one reserve. And then we have special set aside, special project reserves. For example, our asset replacement. Currently we have a capital reserve fund that has $5,000 in it. I don't know if the full council needs to do that, but Matt and I voted to move that capital to the asset replacement. So if that needs to be done, it'll be brought back to the full council. The administrative policy also sets forth a policy for replenishment of reserves. It calls for the development of a one to five year reserve replenishment, replenishment plan to meet the minimum threshold of 25% of general fund ongoing. So we've asked staff to report to the full council on the 25, 26 budget that the reserve additions that we're adding are equal to 20 to 25% of the reserve deficit as according to the one to five year plan. That was on the reserves. Okay. And then the investment policy, we went through that. What we're actually hoping to have brought to the full council, a list of all of the various funds that we have and where those funds are invested. So we all have a good, clear picture of how they're being invested. And there's a whole slew of investment practices of how to, based on risk tolerance, et cetera. So you'll be seeing what the reserve balances are, actual ledger balance of that and where we've got them invested. So it was a very productive meeting, I thought, for us. And we want to also bring back to people because that's one of the conditions that we had in the measure I oversight to identify in our current 25, 26 budget, what items are actually being funded by, specifically being funded by the measure I. Now, a lot of it is going towards just keeping our head afloat. But like the reserve account and the capital reserve account and, and where those other policies are and our new hire for our temporary worker for Public Works, the additional worker in, in-house between fire and, and community services. Those things we identified that we're actually funding with, with our reserve from the, from the policy, from the tax increase. Do you have anything to add to that there, Matt?
Uh, we did have a, we don't have a clear picture on what a total quarter of measure I looks like, but we did have just April and we are skewing toward the lighter side of the projection, not the heavier side. So we just need to keep an eye on that and our decision making based on measure I revenue.
So far to date, we've collected 142,000.
Yeah.
From, that was our first payment. The second final payment will come in August. So we'll find, towards August 18th, we're supposed to get our final number and a check coming the following week.
For the second quarter, just to be clear.
Yeah.
So that was that. That's my report. City managers report?
Yes, very quickly, I just wanted to mention that the finance committee bylaws does state that there will be a report out at council, which you just did, Vice Mayor Thomas. I wasn't expecting, but it was a lot of information and I actually had planned to write a little consent calendar staff report, but for the August 26th meeting, I didn't have enough time between last week and this week. So if the rest of the council who's not on the committee didn't digest all of what was just said to you, it will come back in a written format at the August 26th meeting as a consent calendar item. And of course, you're free to discuss it further at that time, too. The other thing I wanted to mention was that I was going to start working on doing a national night out, which is normally the first Tuesday in August. However, it's very hot here. So when I was last year researching it and we, we did it in August, I found that Texas does it in the first Tuesday in October and I thought, what a brilliant idea. So there's been some questions and people asking about it on Facebook. And so, and I emailed all of the council about the idea of doing it sort of Texas style in October. And I've already made a request to two of our local utility agencies that we work with all the time. And they have shown an interest in sponsoring the event. So I thought I would start working on that and working up a budget and come back to the council. And I mean, certainly it won't exceed my budget authority of $5,000, but in some form or format, I thought I'd see, make sure that the council's, you know, amenable to the idea of having a national night out event on October 7th. So that will be coming back to you. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that we have just today scheduled city librarian interviews. We have four qualified applicants and so we will be holding interviews the week of August 4th for four individuals for that position. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that the council, for the first time ever, is having a mini summer recess that starts tonight in about an hour. And the next council meeting will not be until Tuesday, August 26th, which is approximately five weeks. I mean, not that I'm counting or anything. So I just wanted to announce that to the public and let them know that the council will be taking a little break during the summer and the August 12th council meeting has been canceled. Thank you.
Thank you. There's one more thing that I meant to bring up when you're talking about the museum. As I was reading through the MOU, I thought to myself, could the museum bring a display to city hall of every, so often to enhance the public chances of viewing those things? For example, they have a whole host of military items. Could they bring down a display for Veterans Day or Memorial Day? Flag Day, some of the old flags. Just bringing things down like that, if they could be displayed, this is just a thought. And there's probably reasons why we want to do it and some reasons not to, but for the protection and sanctity of the items. But I just thought, what a better way to, to have folks get to see what some of the things in the library or in the museum are to make them want to go see the rest of it.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Rick, you'd make a great board member. And you can help me.
Well, I also mentioned that maybe the library could partner with the museum on doing some sort of library museum event. So maybe that's something else that.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, even if it was set up someplace that even if it were in here, someplace where you could lock it up here and after hours to protect it. I, I just, when I was reading through it, I thought, what better way to get people to see some of the great stuff that we have in our museum to enhance the opportunity for them to go see it?
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of neat stuff in there, that's for sure.
You know, and we honor Purple Heart and veterans and, and Poppy Days and all the rest of it. And I thought, well, there's a lot that could be brought down.
Good idea. Yep.
Good idea.
So with that, we will close the regular meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I thought you were, I thought you were going there in this last, I forgot to mention. I thought you would, Rick, and I think we both forgot about, we, we did have a law enforcement services ad hoc committee meeting.
Oh.
July 16th, just to let colleagues know, with, with city manager and Sherrod Gibbs and his staff. And we had, we had a, yeah, very cordial, productive meeting here at, at, at city hall. So just wanted to report on that.
I forgot to write that down.
Yeah, it was very, way at the bottom there, there, Rick. Oh, and the pension, Rick, yeah, the pension obligation bond, extremely complicated, very complicated. And, yeah, and I, we spent considerable length of time on that, so I'm very well versed in that. So I, I agree. Yeah, just, just diving into that, it's really complicated.
Well, it seems to me it was written by federal regulators because nobody, they didn't want anybody to understand it.
It was written by the city attorney, actually.
We had to, we had to hire a specialized counsel and who worked in conjunction with our, with our city attorney on that. A very complicated law.
Okay.
Anyway, but good report, Rick.
Prior to going, we're going to go into closed session. Item, item 10, we have three items. Liability claim government code 54956.95, claimant Alberlato Shiraki Artiega, agency claim against the city of Willows. Item B is public employee performance evaluation for the city attorney. And item C is public employee performance evaluation, also under 54957, city manager. Is there anybody wishing to make a comment about these items? Hearing done, we'll turn to closed session at 7:27. City council's returning from closed session. It is 9:02. I defer to our attorney, Andrew, to further report out.
Thank you. The council met on three items in closed session. The first was a liability claim pursuant to government code section 54956.95. The claimant was Abelardo Shiraki Artiega. Agency claimed against was the city of Willows and the report out is direction was given to staff. Second item was a public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code 54957. Title was city attorney and direction was given to staff. And the final item was another public employee performance evaluation pursuant to 54957 of the government code. Title was city manager and direction was given to staff.
With that, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Marty.
Thanks, you guys.
Good job.